Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of council. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interests this evening? I see none. There are no minutes being presented tonight because we've been really busy with the election. So we'll go directly to reports of staff and delegation, the first one being a report regarding the First Concession Road Drain, East, and Second Concession Road Drain. Oh, well, you know what, Luanne? Hang on, we're gonna do 9.2 because I've been told it's being brought forward as a public meeting this evening. We were unable to circulate that, so let's go to 9.2, the Dresser Drain, New Access.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we're asking that council adopt the report prepared by NJ Peralta Engineering, dated June 8th, for a new access culvert over the Dresser Drain for 306 County Road 18 pursuant to provisions of Section 78 of the Drainage Act. And that council authorize the project be tendered, and should the said tender be within the engineer's construction estimate of $58,512 or otherwise consented by the owner, that the mayor and clerk be authorized to award the tender and enter into the necessary agreement. We're also asking council to give first and second reading to Bylaw 6118, and that a Court of Revision be held on November 13th. In the winter of 2015, administration received a request from the owner of 306 County Road 18 to replace the existing access bridge over the Dresser Drain. The owner is planning to build a greenhouse connector building on top of the new access. The engineer has provided his report, and his findings include an 1,800-millimeter diameter be installed. Furthermore, the greenhouse connector shall be installed with a 2, 3.6 meter, which is 12 feet by 14-foot-high overhead sliding doors on both sides of the structure, and that it be positioned to allow access onto the west side of the open portion of the Dresser Drain, so that future maintenance can still be maintained on the drain without having any obstructions in the way. This comment will also be forwarded to the Planning Department to include in their site plan approval. It has also been noted that a minor variance for the setbacks requirements has been completed under file number AO214. A deposit in the amount of 13,600 has been received by the owner for the engineering costs. Once the project is tendered and prior to construction, the owner will provide a deposit for the total construction costs. Following completion of the work, the owner will be required, if necessary, to pay any additional costs or be reimbursed for the surplus amount. This project is included in the 2018 budget at an estimate of $10,500 to start the project. However, all costs will be assessed to the landowner. The latest estimate for the total project is $79,420. And Tony Peralta is here to answer any technical questions you may have.
Okay, thank you very much. Questions, Councilor Verbeke?
Through the mayor, so, I don't wanna say us because I might get charged. Upstream landowners, they're not assessed into this? Okay, no, I know, I just wanted to verify that, okay? Okay. I'll move the recommendation.
Okay, moved by Councilor Verbeke, supported by Councilor Jacobs and Councilor Hammond. Question?
Your worship, thank you. Luanne, I mean, I think it's right here, and it looks like they're gonna build, it says a greenhouse connector, but a building over top of the drain itself? Have we done that in the past?
Yes, as far as I'm aware, I've done it at least once, potentially twice. We've got one over the Sturgeon Creek over at AMCO Produce as well. And during some construction we had over there under another project that was with Peralta, because they didn't put the connector, the doors, so we could get through, they actually had to demolish the entire structure. So in this case, that's why we're guaranteeing this within the drainage report.
Okay, thank you. So before I ask council for the vote, this is a public meeting, so if anyone is in the audience here to address council on this matter, it's your turn to step forward, and I'm not seeing anyone. So we'll come back to council. All in favor of the motion, and motion carries. Thank you. Now we'll go back to 9.1, and regarding the First Concession Road Drain.
This report is to change the assessment to the First Concession Road Drain, prepared by Rude Engineering, dated March 19th. We're asking council to adopt this report as per Section 65 of the Drainage Act. In the winter of 2016, administration received a request from one of the owners of the parcels to change the drainage assessment to reflect their utilization of the First Concession Road Drain East instead of the Second Concession Road Drain. This was a result of a severance application whereby proof of drainage is required, and so when asking them where is their actual outlet, they were directing it to the opposite drain that they were actually assessed into. So the engineer took it upon himself to reassess as per their sketch that was provided in the report. That being said, all of their water, except for a portion of their front lots, is going to the First Concession, and the remainder is going to the Second Concession. Both rule numbers have a buy-in fee to the new drain at a cost of $105 for the one parcel and $120 from the other parcel. What that number represents is the last time we did drain maintenance on the drain, if they were assessed into the drain at the time, their cost would have been that. So because there's still life expectancy on the drain prior to the next cleanout, they pay a portion of that amount, and that will sit on the future maintenance account. And there is no cost to the municipality for this project either.
Okay. Questions from council? Moved by the deputy mayor, support by Councilor Wilkinson. Discussion on the motion, all in favor, and carried. Next item on the agenda is another drainage, 9.3, John Leslie Drain. Just need your mic on again, sorry.
In this report, we're asking that Baird AE be appointed to prepare the engineer's report, actually, an engineer's letter report, for the subsequent disconnection of the John Leslie Drain. This summer, we held a site meeting to provide drain maintenance to the John Leslie Drain, and during the meeting, there was a few landowners that spoke up and advised that their water doesn't actually drain to the John Leslie, since they installed a tile drain several years back, directing it right over to the Lebo Creek Drain. So that being said, there is five parcels in question, and three of them have been notified. Out of the five properties, there's only three property owners. They have been notified that they had the option to either leave themselves in or remove themselves at a cost of $1,000 for the report. They agreed at the time to, it's worth the investment to remove them at the time. This report doesn't outline adding them into the Lebo Creek, because, one, they're already assessed into the Lebo Creek, and, two, when we do the new report on the Lebo Creek, that's when the actual assessment values will be corrected to include them in that report. So we're asking council to appoint Baird to provide this letter report.
Questions from council? Council's wishes. Moved by Councilor Dunn, support by Councilor Hammond. Discussion on the motion, all in favor, carried.
Thank you.
Fund number 9.4, report regarding source water protection. Shannon?
Nope.
There we go.
There we go.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. The purpose of this report tonight is to obtain council approval to continue using the services of the Essex Region Conservation Authority in the role of Risk Management Official and Risk Management Inspector for the municipality. In July 2015, council approved using ERCA in this role for the municipality's source protection plans in both the Essex Region and the Temps-Sidnum Region. The current agreement that was signed was for a period of three years and will expire on September 30th of 2018. Both of the plans that we are part of took effect in 2015 to establish policies to address significant drinking water threats, identify who is responsible to take action on those threats, and set timelines for implementation. The only significant drinking water threat that Leamington is responsible for is handling and storage of large volumes of liquid fuel. These threats' policies are legally binding, and they must be implemented by a trained and certified Risk Management Official and Risk Management Inspector. ERCA has been providing these services on behalf of all the municipalities in the Essex Region since 2015, and collaborates with the Temps-Sidnum Region to ensure consistent implementation of these policies for Leamington. With the current agreement expiring in the next few days, ERCA had provided all the municipalities in our region with a proposal to renew the terms of the agreement for another three-year period. That would begin on October 1st of 2018 and expire December 31st of 2021. The services under that proposal are the same services that ERCA is currently providing to us, and includes developing risk management plans and visiting sites and landowners to identify whether there are significant drinking water threats, doing screening of building and planning applications to determine whether significant drinking water threats will be created as a result of a new development, maintaining compliance with the sections of the Clean Water Act 57, 58, and 59, education and outreach, so they do visit sites, provide packages on source water protection to inform landowners and sector groups of the requirements, and then also monitoring and reporting. So ERCA does annual reports for us, as well as submits reports to the ministry on our behalf. When we received the proposal to renew the agreement, we looked back to 2015 to see what other options were explored at that time, and there were four options explored. One of them included having the Temps-Sidnum Region perform the duties for us. Another was to have Union Water Supply System employ an RMO or RMI on behalf of all the municipalities that form that board. The third option was to conduct the work internally, and the final option was to partially or completely transfer, sorry, those authorities to another municipality. When we looked at all of those and the outcomes from 2015, they were similar then as they are now. None of the municipalities are providing these services on behalf of themselves or other municipalities. We currently still do not have anyone that has RMO or RMI training. That's an external training that would be required, and we would have to look at additional staff because of the resources required. Further on, we'll talk about the number of sites that ERCA has visited, and that will show you how much work there is actually detailed in these services. So after we looked at all of those things, our recommendation, sorry, is renewing the original agreement with ERCA for the three-year term. They do have the knowledge and resources in acting as RMO and RMI for the region, and have developed relationships with our local landowners as well as the authorities in performing these duties. So just to summarize, to date, over the past three years, ERCA has done 164 site visits and identified 43 risk management plans as being required. 20 of those are either completed or in progress, and 23 are outstanding. So ERCA will be working on completing as many of those as they can in the remaining few months of 2018, so that we can try and take advantage of the rest of our source protection implementation funding that we received from the ministry a couple of years back. We did receive that funding in '16, and it was for $90,000. To date, we have spent about $63,000 of that, and it's been used for various activities that ERCA's service fees, as well as doing municipal signage on the roads and screening building and planning applications on our behalf, as well as internally. So in ERCA's proposal to act as RMO and RMI for the next three years, the costs are estimated to be around $72,799 excluding HST. This cost is divided into shared costs and direct costs for each municipality, and that cost is based on the size, type, and number of drinking water threats that we have identified in our area, as well as the size and nature of the regulated areas. We do have the most significant drinking water threats identified out of the local region, and therefore, that is why our budget is proposed to be the highest of the local municipalities. Similar to what we've done in previous years, that budget will show up in the Leamington Water Services operating budget at an approximate cost of $24,270 for the next three years. Based on discussions with ERCA, they do not expect SPIMIF, or the Source Protection Implementation Funding, to be extended beyond the current agreement, which expires at the end of 2018. Once we do receive formal notification from the ministry, we will be able to look at different cost recovery options to perform these services, or for ERCA to perform these services on our behalf. What we could consider are fees for services to those landowners that it applies to. We could also look at something on the municipal water rates or doing it through property taxes. So once, like I said, once we hear back from the ministry confirming that the funding program will not be extended, then we will look at cost recovery models and bring that back to council for consideration of how we recover those fees in 2019. So in closing, the recommendation before council is that council approve utilizing the services of ERCA in the role of Risk Management Official and Risk Management Inspector for the municipality of Leamington in both the Essex Region and the Temps-Sidnum Region, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to sign the agreement for a term of three years.
Thank you very much.
And Katie is here from ERCA to answer any other questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Jacobs?
Thank you, worship. The inspections are restricted land use and so forth, that you're doing inspections when someone applies for a, I imagine it's all the greenhouse operations to withhold the oil, right? Now, do you review the plans and then submit them to ERCA? Like, what I'm looking at here, are we having another layer that we have to go through to get these plans? Because there's a lot of delays currently are happening between ERCA and the different ministries involved, and I'd hate to see this doing an extra delay in that process. Is this an expedited-type thing, or, like, how do you arrive at a, that they meet the requirements-type thing?
So for a new development, we've issued a written direction, and we've worked with your planning and building departments, so they've received this written direction from us that has a schematic that instructs them to look at any new planning development and say, you know, is it within this event-based area? Is it a non-residential property? Are they installing fuel? And if they meet those things, then they send a Section 59 application into our Risk Management Official. And then we've developed a streamlined way to make those risk management plans for new properties, so it allows us to make those dates in advance, because it's under, I think it's building code law and everything else, where you can't proceed until you have your risk management plan. So we've done it in a way that we postdate everything, so we say, you know, you need to have these things by these dates, and then we sign off on the risk management plan, and we follow up with them as they go, because we don't want to hold it up either, not for something like that. So we do move those new applications through quickly, and there's a lot of different ways where we're trying internally to figure out how we can streamline the processes as well. We also have talked directly to some of the consultants that do a lot of the work, so Peralta is aware of this, and we've just, I think, our RMO sent Baird the written direction as well today, so that they know as well, so they can actually contact us in advance of doing anything else to sort of let us know that they're doing this, and we can talk them through the process and try to get things moving as quickly as possible.
Councilor Verbeke?
Mayor, thanks. I don't know who's gonna answer this, but I'm gonna throw it to Rob, because I know I was talking to him prior to, and I'm gonna screw up the acronym, so I'm gonna say the whole thing. Source Protection Municipal Implement Funding. I know we talked about that before. Now, is it possible we can prepay before the end of the year, like, pay this year's installment if we still have some money left in there?
Your worship, I would like to defer to Shannon or Katie. They know the details. So.
All right. Thank you.
So the rules are quite clear with your SPIMIF, that you can't prepay. So I've talked at length with the ministry staff before, and it's something that I'll bring up again with them, but it's been, it's pretty clear, and it's right in your agreement that it has to be for services rendered. What's that? Yeah. I'll do my best.
Counselor Hammond?
Your worship, thank you. And I want to ask you, Shannon, but possibly Katie, you've got the answer. With hiring and using ERCA, does that have the potential to alleviate some of the potential lawsuits that the municipality could be facing under tainted water? Uh-huh. You touched on tainted water, which made me think that using ERCA, will that help eliminate, or could they possibly reduce the potential for lawsuits with tainted water by using them?
You may have misheard.
Yeah.
Drinking water, okay. I said tainted water. You talked about drinking waters, drinking water threats.
Right. So what's your question again?
Well, okay, so what is a drinking water threat?
So a significant drinking water threat in our area is just storage and handling of liquid fuel over 15,000 liters. So there's only one identified threat in Leamington, and that's the only, at this current time.
Okay.
So it basically only applies to sites where they have storage of that amount of fuel or more.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Dunn?
Through you, worship. My question is regarding the 20 outstanding. How long is it anticipated to us to complete the 20 risk management assessments?
Through you, worship. Our goal is to try to get all of the existing risk management plans done by March 2019, and it's, we hope to achieve that. Sometimes we have a bit, a few setbacks here and there, but that's our goal, is to have the existing risk management plans done by March 2019.
I guess a lot of that also depends on, you know, working with the landowner as well, and what information they have available, not just, you know, ERCA's side of things.
Okay. No further questions. Where council's wishes, then? Moved by Councilor Verbeke, support by Councilor Dunn. Discussion on the motion, all in favor, carried. Next item up is water meter replacement.
Okay, I'll just stay over here. So the purpose of this report is to award the water meter replacement and advanced metering infrastructure project to KTI Limited and Census. In January of 2017, council received and approved using the strategic direction of Leamington Water Services Report as the basis of future decisions for the department. The report focused on the development of a strategic plan that included four major initiatives to address system capacity and expansion, future demands on the system based on our greenhouse sector, demand management strategies, and maximizing the use of existing infrastructure, as well as improved customer service. The first project that was identified was a complete meter replacement to update the existing meters that date back to 1996 with new solid-state meters with no moving parts. These meters will provide more accurate reads and should help to reduce the amount of un-metered water loss in our system. The second project is installation of an AMI network made up of transmitters, communication networks, and data management systems, which, when combined with the new water meters, will improve the way we manage our system. It will improve the way we obtain consumption data, the frequency of obtaining that data, and also allow us to identify possible leaks, faulty meters, and theft in the system. The reports that we will be able to generate from this software will be used for trending, invoicing, and can also be imported into our hydraulic modeling software to understand patterns, peak demand, and how our system is operating as a whole. In addition, the AMI system will also provide improved customer service by allowing customers to have interface abilities through networks and provide improved customer service features. The third project that we had was to purchase a hydraulic water model. So upon hiring our new water systems analyst, a detailed evaluation of various hydraulic modeling software platforms was performed, and the evaluation was based on technical capability, GIS compatibility, progressiveness, technical support and training, as well as capital and operating costs. Administration recommended the purchase of Infowater in the fall of 2017, and the water systems analyst continues to work on reviewing that model, calibrating the model, to ensure that it's ready to receive the data from the AMI system. The final project that was identified as part of the strategic plan was a master planning exercise. The intended date for that completion is 2021, or, sorry, 2020 to 2021, and the reason that's delayed is so that we do have time to receive data from our new AMI system for at least a period of one year, and then we can track that data appropriately and then incorporate it into our master plan. Administration reviewed the approach taken by other municipalities when deciding on the best way to implement our water meter replacement and AMI project. By installing the meters and the AMI simultaneously, we will be able to save on both capital and operating costs. The selected contractor will only have to visit the customer once. We will only have one contract to manage internally, and we should be able to realize the end result of smart meters collecting and transmitting the data over a period of one year rather than multiple years. On May 28th, we issued a request for proposal seeking qualified proponents to supply and install customer water meters, retrofit meters with radio endpoint transmitters, and supply and install the AMI system. The RFP was structured into three different options. Option A, sorry, and the proponents could bid on any of the options that were identified. Option A was to include the supply and installation of the AMI system. Option B was to supply and install the water meters and the endpoint transmitters, and then Option C was to undertake the full project as a single integrated project. The RFP documents outlined all of the technical requirements for each option, which included equipment specifications, installation requirements, warranties, training, customer service, and public outreach, as well as the ongoing network maintenance and software monitoring services that will be required with the AMI. In July, administration received four submissions for Option A, four submissions for Option B, and two submissions for Option C. The firms that submitted on the various options were Corix Water Products, Honeywell, KTI Limited, Census, Meter Corp., and Wolseley. Administration's evaluation team reviewed and scored all technical proposals prior to opening the cost proposals for each submission. The technical scores were based on evaluation criteria, which included the proposed submission, sorry, the proposed solution and implementation methodology, corporate qualifications and experience, the project team, technical specs, as well as costs. When evaluating the cost proposals, we evaluated the upfront capital costs, as well as the ongoing operating costs for the network maintenance and software service over a five-year period. Administration's approach to selecting the preferred proponent included assessing the best available option based on the score for Option A and Option B independently, and then we compared that combination to the best Option C submission, which included a business case or benefit to the municipality by selecting a single proponent. At the conclusion of the evaluation process, KTI Limited Census was chosen as the preferred proponent to undertake both Option A and Option B as a single integrated project. In addition, KTI and Census illustrated a benefit to the municipality for selecting them as the preferred proponent through value-added services and cost savings. They were also able to demonstrate that they could complete the project within eight months and were the lowest-cost submission that we received. Overall, the project will include replacing approximately 8,448 residential meters, 411 large commercial meters, 9,600 AMI endpoints, and installing two base stations, as well as the software to operate and manage the entire AMI system. We did provide pictures of all of the equipment as attachments for your review. The water meter replacement and AMI project was approved in the Water 2018 capital budget and was to be funded through the working capital water reserve. This reserve was initiated in 2010 through the collection of a fixed monthly charge on municipal customer bills specifically for water meter replacement purposes. This cost wasn't put onto the bills until partway through the lifecycle of the actual equipment, so it was anticipated that the working capital reserve would be in a deficit position after The technical scores were based on evaluation criteria, which included the proposed submission, sorry, the proposed solution and implementation methodology, corporate qualifications and experience, the project team, technical specs, as well as costs. When evaluating the cost proposals, we evaluated the upfront capital costs, as well as the ongoing operating costs for the network maintenance and software service over a five-year period. Administration's approach to selecting the preferred proponent included assessing the best available option based on the score for Option A and Option B independently, and then we compared that combination to the best Option C submission, which included a business case or benefit to the municipality by selecting a single proponent. At the conclusion of the evaluation process, KTI Limited Census was chosen as the preferred proponent to undertake both Option A and Option B as a single integrated project. In addition, KTI and Census illustrated a benefit to the municipality for selecting them as the preferred proponent through value-added services and cost savings. They were also able to demonstrate that they could complete the project within eight months and were the lowest cost submission that we received. Overall, the project will include replacing approximately 8,448 residential meters, 411 large commercial meters, 9,600 AMI endpoints, and installing two base stations, as well as the software to operate and manage the entire AMI system. We did provide pictures of all of the equipment as attachments for your review. The water meter replacement and AMI project was approved in the Water 2018 capital budget and was to be funded through the working capital water reserve. This reserve was initiated in 2010 through the collection of a fixed monthly charge on municipal customer bills specifically for water meter replacement purposes. This cost wasn't put onto the bills until partway through the lifecycle of the actual equipment, so it was anticipated that the working capital reserve would be in a deficit position after the meter replacement project was completed. However, we will continue to collect annual fees. We still are now, and we'll continue that into the future. And through that collection, in 20 years' time, we will have enough to replenish the reserve and fully fund the next lifecycle replacement, as illustrated in the report tables. This is based on a 2% annual fee increase and a 1.5% annual inflation cost for equipment replacement over the next 20 years. The KTI Limited Census cost for the project is approximately 3.8 million excluding HST. This includes all capital, equipment, and installation costs, as well as network maintenance and software service agreements for the first year of operation. The approved 2018 capital budget for the project was 3.5 million. Administration proposes that the reserve deficit of $686,581 be funded from the waterline renewal reserve, which is expected to have adequate funds at the end of 2018. Administration estimates that it will take approximately three years to pay back the waterline renewal reserve through the continued collection of the monthly surcharge on water customer bills. With the new meters and AMI technology will come annual operating costs as well, and that includes network monitoring and software agreements. This cost is estimated to be approximately $58,000 a year and will increase annually according to the terms of the contract. Having said that, it must be recognized that we do have additional costs right now, and there will be a savings of approximately $140,000 a year by eliminating the need for the manual meter reading, and that is done, currently done through Essex Power. Further, the AMI system will also allow us to bring billing in-house in the future, which could result in additional savings. The option of bringing the water billing in-house will be further explored in 2019 and will be brought back to council for consideration at that time. In closing, the recommendation before council is that the water meter replacement and advanced metering infrastructure project be awarded to KTI Limited and Census in accordance with the proposal delayed dated July 13th in the amount of $3,802,441.30 excluding HST, that an additional $686,581 from the waterline renewal reserve be used to finance the project to be fully replenished and filled by the working capital reserve fund, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to enter into the agreements upon approval of terms and conditions by the municipal solicitor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions? Counselor Verbeke?
The mayor, thanks. Now, the last line, the last two lines do it all, but I just wanted to know about the option of bringing the water billing in-house further explored in 2019, so we're going to worry about that after the budget? Are you going to bring anything prior to the budget for possible equipment and/or staff?
Mr. Newfeld.
The consideration of bringing the billing in-house will take more than just the year of 2019. We'll consider it in 2019. I don't suspect that there would be any decisions until 2020 budgeting at the earliest.
Counselor Jacobs.
Thank you, worship. Shannon, you piqued my interest here when you came up with the remark of 2% annual fee increase over the next 20 years. That translates to me as 40%. What is that increase on? And can you give me a little bit?
That 2% is just on our water rates. And Laura, you can correct me if I'm wrong, because I believe you did that calculation, but I believe that was just on our water rates over the next 20 years, similar to the increases that we're seeing now.
So, you're telling me that in the next 20 years, our water rates are going to be 40% higher? Is that, am I reading this wrong?
Mr. Sharon.
Thank you, worship. Counselor, the municipality has an all-encompassing, fully sustainable lifecycle financial model for our water system. Essentially, it's a really long title to say that we predict over time what it's going to cost to maintain the system and then make sure our rates, as well as our contribution to reserves for capital replacement, are going to be enough to pay for all of that. And so, the model predicts annually an increase in our water rates. Currently, that model is 2% a year, every year on our water rates. And yes, in order to stay basically fully sustainable, that's what we predict, is a 2% increase per year, simply because everything else is inflating, and it costs more money to deliver that water service, all things including capital and operating costs.
I can appreciate your answer, but like, that 2% per year for 20 years compounds every year as well, so are we looking at, I don't have a calculator in front of me, but that percentage at the end of 20 years could be astronomical, wouldn't it?
Your worship, I think, to be fair, it's all relative. Right? So, you know, the time value of money considerations, you know, we can look back in time and say the same thing at that time, but we would expect that everything would be increasing, at least with the price of inflation. And in our particular model, given what we do, both on the capital and operating side, inflation just doesn't quite cut it for that particular commodity. And so, 2% is the recommended increase to be able to pay for the things in the future, because a dollar today is worth a lot more than a dollar 20 years from now.
I thank you for that. I mean, maybe I blew that a little bit out of proportion with the amounts, but I mean, I know the amount is minuscule that we're dealing with, and that increase might be, what, a dollar, $2, or whatever? But I was looking at the end of the 20-year period, so. But I thank you for your response and respect to that.
Yes, and.
We have to do the replacement costs, I understand.
Further questions? Oh, Counselor Hammond?
Your worship, thank you. Shannon, a great report, and you know, and I know we've dealt with this for some period of time now. You just feel obligated to ask more questions when the budget comes in a little over $3.5 million. But the only one that comes to mind, we touched on it the last time we were together, and that is, do you have any guesstimate as to how much un-metered water we're losing in terms of dollar value, you know, with poorly operated meters?
I don't have it as a dollar value off the top of my head, but I know it's around 10% to 11% each year. So, if you equate that at our rates, I would have to, I would have to figure that number out, but I know it's 10% to 11% each year.
Mr. Sharon.
Your worship, forgive me, and we could certainly get council an accurate number, more accurate, but it's about $300,000, a little over $300,000. The other, it's more significant for Leamington as well, because we are a wholesale purchaser of water, and so we are, every cubic meter we lose that's either lost in the system or theft in the system or just un-metered, costs us 56 cents, as opposed to if we treated our own water and ran our own plant, it would only be the net incremental cost of producing that cubic meter. So, it is, it is significant in Leamington, and we do expect this to really help us narrow that.
Yeah, an accurate amount, Rob, is not necessary, but I think in generalities, I mean, $300,000 is a lot of recovery. And thank you, Shannon.
Counselor Dunn.
Through you, your worship. Shannon, great report. I like, that's quite 9,000 units being replaced over a course of a year. That's quite an undertaking. My question is regarding the guarantee on the meters. We've got a 20-year lifecycle, but they're installing the meters. What's the guarantee on our meters?
The warranty is 20 years.
20 years, so that, so they'll go out and replace them at no cost to us, or any of the AMI stuff?
20-year warranty on the meters, 20-year warranty on the transmitters themselves, and then as part of the network services agreement, that's part of their requirement to maintain the AMI network infrastructure as well. And that, that also includes 20, we have two base stations that will be placed on the outskirts of town, and those also have 20-year warranties.
Excellent. Thank you.
Counselor Wilkinson.
Quickly, Shannon, just wondering, what should the end user expect when it comes to the replacement of theirs? How long will it take for them to get in and replace that?
It shouldn't take long at all. There, I actually spoke with them, and they're estimating that each installer will be able to do 15 to 20 installations per day. So, they'll be working over a 12-hour window, so a little less than an hour per, depending on the complexity and the location.
And do they just plan to go down the road, one after another?
What they're going to do, and one of the value-added benefits they provided to us was to work with Essex Power so that they would do it on a cycle basis. Essex Power reads our meters on various cycles, and that way they can work with them directly and do a cycle-per-cycle basis. So, that, the way that it rolls out, we'll meet with them at the beginning of the project to identify which areas we should do first. We do have a lot of meter pit installations, so we don't want to run into issues in the winter if they're covered with snow or frozen and those sorts of things. So, but yes, we will be working with Essex Power directly to do it on a cycle basis.
Mr. Newfeld and Deputy Mayor.
It was an interesting question, what can people expect? I thought you were leading towards their billing, because if we're losing 10% line losses, right, you have to remember that meters never speed up. They only slow down. So, when we're putting in these new meters without moving parts, their bills will be more accurate. And for some, that means it will be more accurate in that they will actually see the actual consumption of water. So, their historical bills may be less than what they will be receiving in the future, but that's basically because the full amount of the water that they're using is going to be accounted for with, under this new meter.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Shannon, our meter is in a meter pit thing. So, what do most people have? Do some have them in homes? Like, will that involve then getting people on when they're available? People aren't always available 9 to 5, so you're going to, there will be some issues, I would take it.
Yes, so there are quite a few that will be inside, both commercial and residential. The hours will be 8 to 8 for installation during weekdays, and then they'll also be working 8 to 4 on Saturdays to accommodate the people that aren't home during the day. And there'll be a full public outreach program notifying people of what will need to happen and, you know, contacting them to make the appointments and follow-up instructions and so forth.
Further questions? Not what are council's wishes? Moved by Deputy Mayor, support by Counselor Jacobs. Discussion on the motion. All in favor? Motion carries. Next report is one about armor stone break wall construction. Mr. Botham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And perhaps I could draw your attention to the figures that were included in the report, figures one, two, and three, just while I'm going through this. Storm events occurring in the area of Leamington's eastern shoreline between Wheatley Harbor and Hillman Marsh have caused significant erosion. While recent storm events were not out of the ordinary, the high water levels in Lake Erie have resulted in greater damage to these ordinary storm events, during these ordinary storm events. And there exists an imminent threat to damage and loss of municipal infrastructure such as roads, water mains, drains, and sewers in the selected areas in the report. The loss of infrastructure and property necessitates the need for this recommendation for immediate action by the municipality. So, in figures one, two, and four for the two locations on Cottery Park Road, and figure three and five refer to a location along the shoreline of Point Peely Drive at Mercy Road 12. We're recommending a short and long-term approach to protecting this most vulnerable and high-priority properties and roadways, which at this time include, again, the two properties along Cottery Park and the one on Peely Drive. First, we'd recommend placing armor stone protection along the road allowance and within the municipally-owned property as an immediate method to slow erosion and mitigate damage. This approach is similar to some of the armor stone that was placed in the most problematic location on Cottery Park near municipal addresses 228 and 238 in the fall of 2017. While the armor stone has helped to mitigate erosion, more is needed to prevent further Second phase would be hiring an engineer familiar with coastal engineering to design and prepare contract documents to be used as a submission to the local conservation authority and to the Department of Fisheries and Oceans, and to tender for the construction of a more permanent protection system in the future. At the discretion of council during budget deliberations, administration will recommend pursuing a more permanent design for municipally-owned shoreline properties in 2019. Both approaches would include for the placement of loads of 2- to 4-ton armor stone at varying locations and quantities. And for council's information, regulations require that construction work within water bodies be reviewed by local conservation authority and possibly the Department of Fisheries and Oceans, depending on the extent of the work in the water. The short-term approach would minimize the damage to municipal infrastructure, while administration pursues the design permitting and tendering and construction for the longer-term solution. Administration is seeking approval to install temporary break wall with loads of 2- to 4-ton armor stone on Cottery Park Road near municipal addresses 228 and 238, Cottery Park Road near municipal addresses 278, 298, and Mercy Road 12 at Point Peely Drive. With the current lake levels, erosion and damage is occurring at an alarming rate. In early August, the municipality requested quotations from four contractors with experience in armor stone construction to construct an interim break wall on Cottery Park between, again, municipal addresses 228 and 238. At that time, that was the only area that administration felt needed immediate attention. So, we closed those tenders August 22nd. We received submissions from two contractors, and you can see that Cobb Marine was the low tenderer at that time. And again, referring to the pictures within the report, it's evident that the two locations on Cottery Park needed immediate attention. Without armor stone protection, the next significant storm event could see the complete loss of road section and additional erosion and threat to the new sanitary sewer along Point Peely Drive. So, rather than re-tendering additional scope, a scope of work to look at those areas, again, we tendered for one segment of armor stone on Cottery Park, and now we've identified two more areas that need attention. We're recommending that we use that unit price in that original quotation to complete the work in the other two properties. So, if you look at the financial impact section, the request for quotation was structured such that the contractors provide a price to prepare the lake bed and a price to supply and place armor stone by the load. In this case, the first case, the lowest submission was 14, just over $14,000, which is approximately $362 a meter of shoreline protection. If we extend this unit price to the other locations, and in recognizing that the second location on, sorry, on Cottery Park would require greater scope, we are recommending, and you can see that actually on, sorry, I should have drawn that to your attention, on page two of my report, page 32 of the agenda, we noted that the, we noted the approximate lengths of these areas that we need to protect. So, the total length of protection of Cottery Park is approximately 140 meters, and along Peely Drive is approximately 40 meters. So, we are recommending that, again, we extend that unit price that we got in the original quotation to the other two projects, and we're recommending that we award this work to Cobb Marine and that the work would not exceed $100,000.
Thank you very much. Questions from council? Counselor Verbeke?
The mayor, thanks. I just want to make sure that we're not into an issue here where they're bidding on one thing and all of a sudden we're throwing another thing in. Could the second bidder have maybe done something similar? Or have you talked to them? Or are we just assuming that based on his price of the 23,000 with the tax, it works out to so much a meter as opposed to, you know, I'm trying to say is, do we have to re-tender the other ones?
I would suggest that we don't. We let a tender based on a number of loads, and we did talk to the low bidder, and he's willing to extend that same unit price to the rest of the work. So, I would suggest that we're okay to go ahead and apply that price for the rest of the work.
Counselor Jacobs.
Thank you, worship. I'm glad to see we're taking some initiative in that particular area, because it's been a real issue every time we get a win. The properties at 228, are they vacant, or do they currently have landowners on them?
Thank you. If you have a look at figures, if you could just, sorry, staple this together. If you look at figure four, we tried to show an aerial photo of the two Cottery Park locations. They're outlined in blue, blue coloring there. So, the two Cottery Park properties are vacant. And if you look at figure, figure five, that's at the long Point Peely Drive near the intersection of Mercy Road 12 and Point Peely Drive, that property is also vacant.
The Point Peely Drive one, though, that's sort of protecting our particular road, though, is it not, right on that curve, Harry?
That's correct.
And going back here, I had a couple of questions. The, is there any way that the shoreline protection, I guess, Mr. Mayor, you'd be able to answer this, the Shoreline Protection Agency has gone in hiatus, is there any way that they will be reinstituted under this new government? Would you anticipate anything at all?
The Shoreline Protection Act still exists. It's the act itself, there's just no money in it. And the last few times that we've been in front of the minister responsible for that, it's been the same answer from the previous government to this, this new government that's been installed, although the new government was a little bit more receptive, I guess, than anything. than anything. They weren't interested in funding anything towards this, but the newest government basically said, you know, we're very aware of this. They were very dismayed at what we showed them as far as the destruction goes, but they admitted that until they got through the books and found out how much money they have or don't have, that they really couldn't make any commitment. So now they know how much money they don't have. I have no idea what they will do, but we've met with the area association from the Cottery Park Police and Marinette just last week, and had this discussion with them. Well, we've found out that they have, well, may be awarded a meeting with the premier themselves. We'll be supplying them with our information, they'll be taking their information, and maybe that extra push. You never know what may result from there, but right now, the simple answer is no money.
And the last statement I have, if I may, your worship, is the fact that you're quoting about 100,000 maximum on this, Alan, correct? And I guess that, considering that we have to go in there after every storm, and some of the pictures that you've given us here showing that complete, just about complete washout of some of the road in some areas, the 100,000 is really cheap insurance at the end of the day, I would think, if we get a couple more storms like these to come in. Like, do we have an estimate of what a good cost after that initial one that you have pictures of here for rehabilitation there?
I'm sorry, you're asking if we have an estimate of the sort of Phase Two that I talked about, what we could end up doing in the future along the shoreline?
What I'm asking is, with the pictures that you have given us here, that we had to rehabilitate this area of road, so what would have the cost been? I'm sure it was excessive. And then if we have a couple more of these storms, so the shoreline protection is where I'm going with this, would save us this cost, hopefully, so it's like insuring yourself here.
I think Rob may have that number.
Cost spent on the rehab of the area?
Yes, your worship, just the one April storm event, we spent about $30,000 net incremental costs, so, meaning that doesn't include all of our staff wages for all of the staff that were down there, working throughout the workdays and all of our own equipment. So we could probably safely double that amount to say that just the April storm was about $60,000 worth of cleanup, and then we've had other events since then. And obviously, the further the erosion goes inland, the higher the risk of greater damage.
So basically, this is cheap insurance after having a cleanup bill of that magnitude. So I bet you're on the guys' back for moving forward with this. Great initiative. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Alan, just to be clear, these properties where we're going to put these, the armor stone, these are our properties, correct? They're not, this is not private property that we're looking to protect?
Our intention is to place the armor stone in the right-of-way. We're so close to the municipal right-of-way at the moment with the erosion that has already occurred, that our intention is to place the armor stone within the municipal right-of-way. So we're not putting armor stone on private property, but if we don't do something now, we will lose, well, you've seen it in the pictures, we've already lost portions of the road, and it's highly likely that it would happen again. So I guess I didn't view it as protecting private property, I viewed it as protecting our infrastructure.
But where that, where that is cut in, that's not owned by anyone. Those lots that would have been there 12 years ago, they were not, they are not privately owned. Do we not own those? We don't?
No, the lots between Municipal Address 278 and 298 are privately owned, but the lot between 228 and 238 is owned by the municipality.
Okay, so the one is owned by us, and then the other one is just coming too close to our, okay, all right, so technically encroaching. I was just going to say the one that is owned by us. What about the one on Point Peely Drive? I was under the impression that we had owned that one as well. So anyway, regardless, it doesn't need to be that, I don't need to be that picky, but to me, we are protecting our own property, and to be good neighbors and keep it from eating away at the people abutting our property, it's only right that we do that. I'm glad that we're doing that. I think it's responsibility we need to take on. We've put money into the Point Peely Drive, and to risk losing that, huge money. I know there will be people complaining that it's the taxpayer money going in, as we talked earlier, into a portion that doesn't affect them, but it's for the greater good. And to me, I'm glad to see us taking the high road like that. Thank you.
Mr. Newfeld?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And that leads right to the comment that I was going to make. It's important to understand that what we're trying to do here isn't so much shoreline protection as infrastructure protection. The main lot on Figure four that Alan had referenced, the large one in between 278 and 298, that is privately held. However, there is enough of the road allowance left for us to place the armor stone on our road allowance. The private lot will continue out into the water, but we have enough space right now to get the armor stone within our right-of-way to protect our road and our infrastructure. That's the key, and it's the same on Peely, Point Peely Drive, that is our lot, but we're, the reason we're putting the armor stone there is to protect the road and the infrastructure. It may sound like splitting hairs, but it's not just about shoreline protection, it's about infrastructure protection.
Counselor Dunn?
Through you, your worship. Okay, so the properties we own, and we've let them, now, there's properties where people can't afford to put break walls out, and that gets eaten away, and then it starts eating away the other people's properties beside us. And with this case here, you say we own the one between 228 and 238, and that's causing erosion on those other people's properties, because, you understand what I'm saying? Should we not have put that break wall out sooner and maybe out further to protect those properties as well? Will that not come back to us? Like in the Point Peely Drive situation there, I know it comes up fast, trust me, I know I lost my whole break wall off the front of it in one storm, but maybe we should be looking at anything else that might be, so that it doesn't come back to us, because could they come after us later on saying, look, our property got damaged because you weren't putting break wall on your...
Mr. Sharon?
Thank you, your worship. Counselor Dunn, that particular property, the municipality only recently became the owner. We were able to acquire it through tax sale. For the last couple of years, we've been working on trying to do something, however, the owner of the property was completely absent there, an American landowner, and we reached out, tried to contact them. Essentially, we were looking for permission to do works on their private property, primarily to protect the infrastructure, the water main and the road, but we couldn't get ahold of them. The property was in tax arrears, and we were able to acquire the property that way. That allowed us to put some armor stone down in the fall of last year, and then it's allowing us to put more this year. In the report, it talks about putting some money aside to really look at shoreline protection from a municipal perspective and what should we do. And that includes everything up to and including that exact consideration you're referring to about moving break walls and shoreline protection further into the lake. It gets to be very complicated and very costly to do that, but the best shoreline is a continuous shoreline where you don't have these properties that are unprotected, and then the waves cut in, and then some properties are, well, basically, they get hammered from the front and the flank, depending on which way the wind's blowing. So we're going to look into that. I'm not concerned that we've acted negligently, there's not really an obligation on behalf of landowners to do things to protect other people's property, especially when it comes to shoreline protection. However, given the fact that we are the municipality, we do own some of these lots, and our residents and the municipality is experiencing loss to the infrastructure, you know, it's something we want to look at and bring a more comprehensive report back to council. We feel that this particular work will address the properties of highest priority right now and give us some time to look at what the long-term strategy is. A big root cause of all of this that we're dealing with right now is the lake levels. The lake levels have risen, and so the storm events now just appear more severe, and the erosion is occurring at a faster rate, and we're required to act quickly. So we're hoping, again, the short-term plan will buy us some time and build a longer-term plan.
I appreciate that, Rob. The thought was that we acquired it after the fact from negligent landowner, then I understand that it's not, we didn't deliberately do it, but I'm just saying, that could be, you know, and that's, I'm glad you can come up with a plan for the future too as well. Thank you.
Counselor Burbicki?
We're the mayor, listening to our C O there and looking at Figure three, I see that the county road's involved in this. Is there any chance we can get money from the county?
Mr. Sharon?
We didn't, we did not reach out to the county, counselor. That particular parcel is actually owned by the municipality, so we own the parcel of land that is eroding. It's the extension of Mercer Road 12 that basically runs right to Lake Erie. If your question is, you know, can we or should we ask the county, certainly I can talk to Peter about that, and if it's council's wishes, we could write a letter to the county and ask that they contribute to that particular part of protection.
Just to follow up, I think I know the answer already, but it's also protecting their infrastructure too, so if, you know, I don't want to put it all on our representatives, but, you know, we're in this, we're in remote southern Essex County, so hopefully they can throw some money this way.
Yes, they're always so generous. So these are the good questions tonight, and these are the discussions we just had with the association that sat down with us last week, and the same conversations we had with the minister when we were up there at the AMO conference a month ago, and the same conversations I've had with the ministers over the years attending the AMO conferences, and the answers always come back the same way. But to your one question there, Counselor Dunn, about going out farther, and Mr. Sharon alluded to it, the deeper you go, the more ministries you involve, and that's where it gets more difficult. So if we go too far, then the DFO gets in, and it's a whole nother nightmare. So placing these on our property that we own are the best we can do at the time, and hopefully, ultimately, to the other question from Counselor Jacobs, that the feds and the province may actually fund that Shoreline Protection Act, and then each individual property owner can take steps to protect their land. Counselor Dunn?
Through you, your worship. So in that event, all the other properties are out a certain part, and this is eaten away. I'm just saying, take it back out to the original level where the dirt and level ground was.
I understand where you're going, but those, that's when we start running into other authorities.
Okay, but it was originally ours anyway, so anyway.
Yeah, I know. So there's a recommendation before us, if there are no more questions. What are council's wishes? Moved by the Deputy Mayor, support by Counselor Dunn. Discussion on the motion. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you.
Next report is one regarding the Water Services and Highbury Canco. Ms. Roach?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. In 2001, the Ministry of Environment established a transfer order that vested the municipalities of Leamington, Kingsville, Essex, and Lake Shore as tenants in common to form the Union Water Supply System. The transfer order is responsible for the establishment of the Joint Board of Management, who is responsible for the oversight of Union Water. The transfer order also recognized HJ Heinz as a direct customer of the Union Water with a preferred customer water rate. These privileges were offered to Heinz as they were obligated to invest in capital in Union Water, resulting in significant financial contributions to the existing facility. When Heinz ceased operations in 2014, all plant assets and lands were sold to Highbury, and the Heinz debt was assumed by Union Water and consequently all four owning municipalities. As council is aware, the Union Water Board in February 2014 approved a motion to temporarily extend a lower wholesale rate to Highbury to support the viability of this new operation. The water rate offered was equivalent to that of, that Heinz enjoyed for many years. The preferred wholesale rate continued to be offered to Highbury as approved by the Union Water Board through to 2018. The municipality was notified on July 18th of this year from Union Water's general manager that the Union Water Board obtained a legal review of the preferred wholesale rate currently offered to Highbury. The correspondence is attached to the report. The Union Water legal review concluded that the provision of the preferred wholesale water rate to Highbury could constitute as bonusing, which is not permitted under the Municipal Act. As such, at its meeting on June 20th, the board approved the termination of the Union Water reduced wholesale rate to Highbury effective December 31st, 2018, and that as of Jan. 1, 2019, Highbury become a direct customer of the municipality of Leamington for water services, and that the municipality of Leamington be subject to regular wholesale rates for Highbury water demand. Leamington's municipal solicitor has confirmed that a preferred rate for the supply of the water offered to Highbury is a historical anomaly and could indeed be considered bonusing. The terms of the agreement, as arranged with Heinz and Union Water, are much different than that with Highbury, and that those discounted wholesale rates, as outlined in the agreement with Heinz, is no longer justified by contract, legal requirements, or by circumstance for Leamington. On July 24th, administration sent communication to Highbury to inform them of the correspondence that was received, as well as a copy of the report that was scheduled to be presented to council on August 13th. The recommendation at the time was to transition Highbury to Leamington's regular commercial, regulated commercial customer rate by 2021. Highbury's management on August 10th requested that the report be deferred as they were required additional time to review the information and want an opportunity to discuss with senior administration. As a result, the report was removed from council's August 10th agenda. Senior administration and the management of Highbury met on September 12th to discuss the options within the original report. The original report provided for two options for council to consider. The first was to move Highbury effective Jan. 1 to the full commercial water rate. This would change Highbury's rate per thousand gallons from $2.05, which is their current preferred rate, to $4.18 per thousand gallons. This would increase Highbury's water cost by approximately $426,000 based on current volumes and prices. The second option considered in the report, and at the time was the recommended approach, was if a phase in the water rate increases over a three-year period. Administration felt that this was a reasonable approach for Highbury to transition to the new commercial customer rate as approved in the water rate study and the annual fee schedule. Administration is still of the opinion that phasing, the phasing plan of this water structure is in good faith, which has been established in a response to a historical anomaly and is reasonable under the circumstances. Further to our discussion with the Highbury management on September 12th, a third option is presented and is now being recommended for council to consider. This option also recommends a phased-in approach to adjusting Highbury's water rates from the existing preferred customer rate charged by Union Water, and recommends to initiate a review to consider establishing a large volume user rate for the system. As this is a new customer for Leamington, with the next largest user being one-third of Highbury's consumption, a review of the impact and cost associated with providing services to large customers is warranted. The outcomes of the analysis and recommended large user rate will be brought forward to council's for consideration once completed. As Union Water will be charging Leamington the approved 2019 wholesale rate for its portion of the water flows within the system beginning on January 1st, this should be the starting rate charged to Highbury. So using the 2018 rates, this is an additional $144 in water cost for Highbury over the existing preferred rate. This additional revenue will be realized by Union Water and not by Leamington Water Services. There will be some additional costs that will need to be considered in the future. The dedicated distribution main that currently feeds Highbury is a common asset, as outlined in the transfer order. There's ongoing maintenance of the main, as well as meter maintenance and calibration that will be required. For now, these will remain under the Union Water's responsibility, and as we work through Union Water's restructuring plans, these lines of responsibility will be resolved. As options are determined, how the common assets will be dealt with, administration will also advise council. It is also noted that this report and the recommendations included in the report were provided to Highbury last Wednesday. So therefore, it's recommended that firstly, council receive the communication from Union Water Supply Services; second, that effective January 1st, 2019, the water services rate for Highbury Canco Corporation be established equivalent to the municipal wholesale water rate charged by Union Water Supply Services; and third, that council direct administration to undertake a review to consider a special rate for high-volume customers and report the findings back to council for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions from council? None. Recommendation is out before us. Moved by Counselor Jacobs, support by Counselor Hammond. Discussion on the motion. All in favor? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda.
all in favor. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a report. Let me get to it. Amendment to the noise bylaw. Eerie Ramblers. Now we understand. Ms. Horton?
Thank you. As you'll recall, during the September 10th council meeting, there was a report presented regarding the proposed bylaw to regulate noise. At that time, council asked administration to provide a further report with background information regarding the exemption for the eerie ramblers, as that exemption was from 5:00 a.m. till 11:00 p.m. for activities carried on or sponsored by that motorcycle club. So, some history. In April 2005, the municipality received correspondence from the Eerie Ramblers Motorcycle Club requesting an exemption from the noise bylaw. Council considered a report during the April 11th meeting, and a resolution was passed deferring the matter. For more information, the May 2nd, 2005 meeting, council considered another report, which included a recommendation to grant the exemption. At that meeting, there was discussion regarding the request, and a couple of members from the Eerie Ramblers Club attended. They acknowledged that the club was zoned for motorcycle activities, and that the club irrigated the track prior to 9:00 a.m. on race days. It was also discussed that the track was actually irrigated at 5:00 a.m. on those days. It was at that meeting that council passed a resolution to exempt the motorcycle club from the noise bylaw for activities carried on or sponsored by it between the hours of 5:00 a.m. and 11:00 p.m. And then, the amended bylaw came forward at the next council meeting on May 9th, 2005. I did speak with a representative of Eerie Ramblers to confirm again that irrigation of the track begins at 9:00 a.m., but generally practicing for the race does not usually begin until 9:00. He indicated that racing in the dark is not the preferred timeframe to do that. So, there's no financial impact to the municipality as a result of granting the exemption. So, the recommendation is that council direct the clerk to grant the following exemption from bylaw 5118, being a bylaw to regulate noise for events sponsored by the Eerie Ramblers Motorcycle Club at 225 Deer Run Road between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 11:00 p.m., and on scheduled race days between the hours of 5:00 a.m. and 11:00 p.m.
Moved by Counselor Dunn, support by Counselor Hammond. Question?
No, with a comment. Yes, thank you. Since our last meeting, I contacted a resident down there who lives very close by, and he said, till now, there's never been a problem. And he didn't anticipate that there ever would be, so.
All in favor of the motion? Carries. And the last report is one regarding Home Occupation Policy Business Licensing Bylaw Parking Requirement. Ms. Horton?
So, at the last council meeting, administration presented a draft home occupation policy that dealt with business licensing bylaw parking requirements. It was explained with that accompanying report that under the provisions of the business licensing bylaw, home occupation has the same meaning as it does under the zoning bylaw, and that it doesn't make a distinction based upon the intensity of the impact on the surrounding residential neighborhood. Our business licensing bylaw requires proof that the premises is in compliance with the zoning bylaw, and home occupations are required to provide a sketch showing current parking and proposed off-street parking associated with the home occupation. The provisions of Section 4.38 of the zoning bylaw govern the parking requirements for various uses. A residential use requires two off-street parking spaces. A home occupation business use requires a further two off-street parking spaces. So, that makes the parking requirement cumulative, meaning that four parking spaces are required for any home occupation. This creates some difficulties because it does not consider the intensity of the home occupation, meaning that some businesses may require four parking spaces and others may not. So, it is proposed that the necessary parking spaces be based upon the number of visits to the business premises by client, staff, or other persons attending for business reasons. On that basis, a policy was prepared and presented at the last council meeting. Council at that time asked for further options instead of the one that was presented. So, it is still proposed that council consider a policy in respect of the necessary parking based on the number of visits, and I have provided six options for council's consideration. So, I've listed them as far as option 1 to 6, and I've labeled them as well for your reference. Option 1 is essentially based on the option that was presented to council at the last meeting. I've referred to it as low-intensity weekly visits. As you'll see, the home occupations would be divided into classes. Class 1 would be in respect of three or fewer visits per week, and no more than one visit at any one time, and that would require a minimum of only two parking spaces. Class 2 would be between four and 12 visits per week, no more than two visits at any one time, and require three parking spaces. And Class 3 is 13 or more visits per week, or three or more visits at any one time, and that would require the full four parking spaces. Option 2 is referred to as high-intensity weekly visits. Again, we have three classes. One, seven or few, fewer visits per week, and no more than one at any one time. Again, two parking spaces required for that. Class 2, between eight and 21 visits per week, and no more than two at any one time, three parking spaces. Class 3, 22 or more visits per week, or three or more visits at any one time, four parking spaces. Option 3, based on a daily visit. So, there was a suggestion at the last time that a weekly consideration might be a little bit more difficult to consider. So, these are daily considerations. So, option 3 is based on a low-intensity daily visits. Class 1s, Class 1, 2, and 3 again. Class 1, two or fewer visits per day, and no more than one visit at any one time. That would also, you could consider that as 14 per week, but it would be based on a daily analysis. So, the minimum number is two parking spaces. Class 2, between 3 and 6 per day, no more than two visits at any one time. Minimum parking spaces are three. And Class 3 is seven or more visits per day, or three or more visits at any one time. The maximum four parking spaces required. Onto option 4, which is your high-intensity daily visits. Again, Class 1, four or fewer visits per day, no more than one visit at any one time, two parking spaces. Class 2, between 5 and 12 per day, no more than two at any one time, three parking spaces. Class 3, 13 or more visits per day, or three or more at any one time, maximum of four. Option 6, unlimited visits, minimum of two parking spaces. So, there would be no classes attached to this option. It would be any number of visits per day and any number of visits at any one time. The municipality would be looking at just a minimum of two parking spaces. And then, finally, the option 7, unlimited visits, no minimum parking spaces for any number of visits per day or any number of visits at any one time. So, the application for a business license, again, would require operators to certify the number of visits and advise the municipality of any changes. For those seeking relief from the requirement of the four parking spaces, they would be issued a conditional license. The conditions would specify that the relief of the four parking spaces requirement within the zoning bylaw does not extend beyond the term of the license, and that all other requirements of the bylaw would be, must be complied with. This would be a temporary policy until the zoning bylaw could be considered by council as amended in the future to, to deal with this situation that we have found is creating some difficulties for home occupations to become licensed. The alternative would be to require any applicant to apply for a minor variance. There's no financial impact of the decision for the municipality, and the recommendation is that council adopt the home occupation bylaw respecting business licensing bylaw parking requirements with respect to this issue for home occupations, including council's choice of option as outlined in the report, and that council direct the Director of Legal and Legislative Services to issue licenses in accordance with the policy.
Thank you very much, Ms. Horton. I thank you for your patience with council and using your imagination to come up with so many different options for us to consider. So, Counselor Jacobs?
I thank you, worship. Ruth, currently, are there many complaints that come in in respect to parking at home occupation locations currently?
I can't say that. Our department has received complaints regarding an abundance of parking on streets related to home occupations. I can't speak for the planning department, but because it wouldn't necessarily be a bylaw enforcement matter, except, well, I guess it would be under the zoning bylaw, I can't say that I am aware of many complaints. The issue has really arisen as a result of issuing the licensing for these home occupations and not being able, or in a position to do so because of the zoning bylaw.
Okay. And going over this, I like the alternative that they can apply for a, an applicant for a temporary, what is I'm looking for here? A variance on the premises. If they aren't able to provide those parking spots initially, they can apply for a variance in respect to that, so they can obtain a license on a temporary basis. So, regardless, I guess, of what council decides on, what option that you provide us with that they accept, that would give them an opportunity to continue operating for a period of time until they're able to rectify that, that scenario. The other question I do have, though, if an individual, this was brought to me, has a home occupation of some sort, whether it's a beauty shop, auto mechanics, or whatever they're doing in their backyard, or their garages, or whatever, is there any fines related to those? Or do you just go in and say, okay, you're operating a business, you can't do this anymore, and they continue? What options or what penalties are imposed upon those individuals that are saying, oh the hell with it, I'm just gonna continue what I'm doing, you know, what are you gonna do to me type thing? So.
So, are you speaking of, let me just reiterate your question. If somebody is operating a business within their home currently, and, and we get a complaint about that business, we currently will reach out to them with a notice that they are required to apply for a zoning, I'm sorry, for a business license, and we will determine whether they are appropriately zoned, whether or not they can have a home occupation there, because there are some residential uses that would not allow for a home occupation. And then, we simply follow up on the business licensing aspect of it, and encourage them at this point to apply for a business license.
If I can get a little bit more specific, then the individual that came forward to me is saying like a backyard garage mechanic. Okay, I'm doing, like, we, we sort of identify home occupations as someone that's doing massages, beauty parlor, you know, along those, those particular lines. But someone that's operating a different type of home occupation, like, like, for lack of a better phrase, a backyard mechanic as an example, I'm fixing brakes on cars, or I'm doing this and that. There are things to me where is that they have to operate a business under a business license. Let's say a certified garage, and then someone is operating in the backyard. The certified garage is imposed a fine or penalties and so forth, not only by the municipality if they provide one, but by their licensing divisions. And they were inquiring as to what penalties are imposed on these backyard type of businesses, if any?
Very likely, a backyard mechanic would not qualify as a home occupation. So, in that case, if it's very clear that they would not be able to comply with the provisions of a home occupation, that would be a zoning bylaw contravention, so we would proceed under the zoning bylaw. So, they would be issued an order to cease their operation, and if they don't comply, we have some options. One option would be to lay a charge under the Provincial Offenses Act. Another option would be to commence proceedings to the Superior Court in obtaining an injunction to prohibit them from continuing their operation.
So, in essence, they are, what can really be a home occupation, in other words, is what you're explaining to me, correct?
Yes.
Counselor Dunn?
Through you, your worship. Ruth, I've got a couple of questions. So, in these different options that we've, you've provided us with the different parking spaces in the, is that plus two for their home, for their own cars?
No, that, that's the cumulative number. So, we'd be looking at a total number for their residence and their business is identified in each option. So, for example, I'm looking at option 2, Class 1, which is the high-intensity weekly visits. They would, if they were a Class 1 home occupation, having seven or fewer and no more than one visit at any time, that, that property is only required to have two parking spaces.
Okay, thank you. At present, you also mentioned about if it's not zoned appropriately, they have to cease their business, their home occupation business. Has there any, any of these businesses been zoned or found not to be allowed at this present time?
I can't put my finger on one that has recent, that I can think of that is not been prohibited, or been permitted as a home occupation, but I am not involved in the day-to-day analysis of those applications. So, I'm certain that there are going to be some that are either using more of their property for their business than is allowed. So, they have the option to scale that back and proceed on that basis, or be advised that they would not qualify for their business license, and they'd have to look for other alternatives. Like, generally, our, our goal in some cases is to move these businesses out of their homes into a storefront in a commercial location. That is the other option. So, I can't, I can't say for sure that there have been some that we have received during our latest, our latest outreach to the, the businesses that we're looking to have licensed, but I'm sure there's some operating out there that we're going to have to deny on that basis.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Ruth. I'm going to take you to the second paragraph on page 53 in regards to what Counselor Dunn was saying, because that was my question too. It starts with the provisions of Section 4.38. It says, "A residential use requires two off-street parking spaces. A home occupation business uses, use requires a further two off-street parking spaces on the business premises." So, does that not mean then that those three or fewer, say, I'm just looking at option 1, that minimum number of parking spaces under Class 1 that says two would actually mean they'd have to have four? Or, am I, I know it's legalese, and I may not be understanding it correctly, but to me, that's how I'm, I'm reading it as a simple.
Essentially, what, what the option is saying is that if you have three or fewer visits per week, visits per week and no more than one visit at any one time, you are only required to have two total parking spaces, so you really aren't required to have any more parking spaces as a result of your home occupation.
Regardless of what that second paragraph says?
Well, that's the provision of our current zoning bylaw. We're looking at a policy to implement a new approach.
Okay, great. And then if I could, please steal one more. So that variance that Counselor Jacobs was talking about, is there a price tag attached to that? First, it talks about a conditional licenses, and then it goes down to a minor variance. We would be talking dollars there, would we not?
Yes, there is an application fee for the minor variance.
But not on the conditional?
No, just your business license application, just that typical license, so, yes.
All righty, thank you very much.
So now Ms. Orton's gone to a great deal of trouble to come up with a whole bunch of suggestions for council to consider for parking spots. So what are council's wishes? Counselor Wilkinson.
Your worship, somebody can talk me out of it, but I'd like to know, I'm leaning towards option six, the unlimited visits, minimum parking spaces, or park, minimum two parking spaces. What really appealed to me, what Ruth has introduced here, is the relief that they can apply for. That's very important. With what she said earlier here, when Counselor Jacobs asked, are we getting many complaints about these home occupations? It doesn't sound like we are. I think the, one of the big motivations behind the business license is just to identify these people, to get them up and identified, and yes, apply with the rest of the conditions, which they'd have to do, but we're not impeding on their daily business, I guess, using option six. But if somebody else has further ideas, by all means, bring them up.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. I think in an ideal world, that would be great, but I think back to the yoga center that was located on Robson Road, and she had lots of visits, she had sizable classes. They were parking on the street, infringing on people's off, you know, in front of their house parking as well as using the municipal parking lot. I just think that if we give carte blanche, I don't think that that's good when we, we have, it might be a one-off, but I still think we need to have a little protection from those one-offs. I would like to see option four. I like the fact that Ms. Orton said that the two does not include your own spots. That, to me, gives us, gives the people themselves a lot more leeway. And then the minimum of four, if you're doing 13 or more visits per day and three or more visits at a time, you've got a sizable, you've got a sizable business operating in your house, is what I would say, to the point that I think when you're having that many, you should consider perhaps a storefront location. I really just think, Counselor Wilkinson, that, that we will come to regret that, that two, simply because we've had that issue. It infringed on neighbors' rights, used our park, municipal parking lot as their parking lot, which I also don't think was right. So anyway, I'm leaning towards option four because we've had that.
Counselor Verbeke.
Well, everybody's gonna throw their options out. I like, I like options five.
Mr. Newfeld.
I just wanted to point out, we gave enough options for each of you to choose one so that we could just...
There you go.
Your worship, thank you. So I'll jump in. I, I agree with the deputy mayor. I think that four looks attractive. Anybody that is in a Class Three that has three or more visits at any one time has got someone working with them, I think, as well, so, and should be required to have four spots, so that's my thought, and I'm gonna go with everyone else's.
Can we have consensus on number four, high intensity daily visits? Five's not there, Larry. Yes, motion then is made by the deputy mayor to go with option number four, supported by Counselor Hammond. Further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. So we are now at, we did 9.9, okay. There were no matters for approval, other matters for consideration, there were none, but we do have report on closed session.
A closed meeting was held at 5:00 PM prior to the open session of council pursuant to subsection 239-2C and 239-2F of the Municipal Act for the purpose of considering four items. The first item is confidential report, LLS 4818, dated July 24, 2018, regarding Section 106 of the Municipal Act. No direction was provided on this matter. The second item, confidential report, LLS 6418, dated September 12, 2018, regarding proposed transfer of road allowance east of Fair Street. Council provided direction to administration with regard to the matter. The third item, confidential report, LLS 6718, dated September 11, 2018, regarding staple storage silos. Council provided direction to administration with regard to the matter. As a result of this meeting, the following suggested action is before council for consideration in the open session. Number one, council consent to the assignment of the subject lease. Number two, council authorize the Director of Legal and Legislative Services to execute all documents required to effect such assignment.
Looking for mover and seconder on that? Counselor Wilkinson, Counselor Hammond, discussion on the motion? All in favor? Carry.
The fourth item confidential report, LLS 6818, dated September 21, 2018, regarding legal opinion proactive bylaw enforcement. No direction was provided on the matter. Proper notice of the meeting was given and the meeting adjourned at 6:06 PM.
Thank you very much. Consideration of bylaws.
Bylaw 59-18 being a bylaw to amend bylaw number 0318, a bylaw to provide for the licensing and regulating of businesses in the municipality. Bylaw 61-18 being a bylaw for a new access culvert over the Dresser Drain for 306 County Road 18, Municipality of Leamington, County of Essex. That's first and second reading only. Bylaw 62-18 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council of the Municipality of Leamington at its meeting held September 24, 2018.
Moved by Counselor Verbeke, support by the deputy mayor. Discussion on the motion? All in favor? Carry. There is a notice of motion.
Worthy mayor, in light of what we've heard in closed session, I'm gonna withdraw it.
Counselor Jacobs, do you support the withdrawal? So to our clerk, what's the next procedure, then?
Counselor Verbeke can ask for another seconder for the motion, and then they can consent to withdrawing it.
Well, worthy mayor, since it's so early, maybe we should just go through with my notice of motion. I didn't think this was gonna happen, so I'd like to read my notice of motion, and I'm gonna go through with it.
Okay.
Dated September the 10th, moved by myself and second by Counselor Jacobs, that I voted in the prevailing side of the request of council considering a portion of the resolution, C20418, from this meeting held August 27, 18. With number two, council direct administration to commence a proactive bylaw enforcement in the Uptown as a pilot project and assign a current bylaw officer specifically to the Uptown project. And number three, that administration bring forward a report in connection with the impact of this project prior to the 2019 budget.
Okay, so simply just vote on, on that notice of motion, then. Okay? The motion to reconsider. Not clear? Okay. This is a notice of motion that Counselor Verbeke brought forward to reconsider the decision that council made in regard to proactive bylaw enforcement, dedication of a bylaw enforcement officer to the Uptown core. What was item number one was the review or study of whether you can have a 100% window coverage, and the final part of that was, oh, all right, was to bring it back to the 19, to 2019 budget deliberations. So the motion itself, saying I voted on the prevailing side and request that council reconsider a portion of Resolution C20418 from this meeting held August 27. Council direct, Part Two, council direct administration to commence proactive bylaw enforcement in the Uptown as a pilot project and assign a current bylaw enforcement officer specifically to this project, and administration bring forward a report in connection with the impact of this project prior to the 2019 budget. So the counselor is asking for reconsideration of that motion.
Your worship, so if we vote to reopen this, then it gets discussed again and goes back to whatever decision other people, but if we vote it down, it stays where it is. So for or against? Is that what you, am I understanding that correctly?
So if the motion to reconsider is, does not pass, then everything stays as is. If the motion to reconsider is passed, the, I will read out the exact motion that's back on the floor for council to revote on.
Everybody clear as mud? All right, so then I'll just simply call a vote, and again, because I asked for a recorded vote in the first place, I'll ask for a recorded vote again this time.
Okay, when I call all those in favor, please raise your hand and leave it raised until I call your name. All those in favor? The mayor and Counselor Jacobs, and all those opposed? Counselor Hammond, Counselor Dunn, Deputy Mayor McDonald, Counselor Verbeke, Counselor Wilkinson, the motion passed.
Move on to open session. I'm sorry, Ruth, is, no, okay. Under open session, Counselor Hammond.
Your worship, thank you. I'd like to draw your attention. We have a guest in the gallery tonight, Karen O'Meara. I think most of you know Karen. She is here because she is a chamber member and a representative of the Chamber Executive and is gonna visit us periodically, just to make sure that we're doing everything we should be doing properly. Right? How do we do it tonight, Karen?
I'm impressed, I think you're pretty good.
Yeah, welcome, anyway.
Counselor Wilkinson.
Thank you, worship. Last week, Thursday, I had two telephone calls from two business owners that received their notice for the public meeting happening Wednesday night and Monday today. Both gentlemen were pretty upset about that, actually, and I said I'd bring it up, or I said I'd ask the question by email, and I said I'd ask again tonight how this would happen. Second thing was, I sat here from about 4:30 that day, or quarter to five, I guess, till about quarter after six that night, and as, I don't know, two or three people came out, they said they still hadn't received any sort of notification that day, they were B&amp;B owners. I'm just looking for a little feedback on that. First of all, how, how it is they got that mail to them after the public meeting, and why some of these business owners didn't get a notification at all. Sorry for me read that one.
So, Ms. Orton?
Well, I apologize for that. We tried to get our notices out in a timely manner. In this case, as I advised council that I would, I contacted the BIA in the chamber and I sent the notice out directly to them. We posted it on social media and we put it in the newspaper. So we did intend to send it out to our current business owners, given the, the other priorities that we had within the department, that did happen, but it didn't happen such that they would get it much before the, the one date for the evening session, which was held here. We had another session this morning at the art gallery, and the notice does indicate that feedback can be provided by telephone directly and through email to us, so we have received a few comments that way.
Ruth, can we, how many attended this morning?
We had six people attend this morning.
Counselor Verbeke? Oh, all right, just hang on. Counselor Jacobs?
Thank you, worship. Just to add to Counselor Wilkinson, I received, I believe, the same phone calls, the same individuals, but one of the, they were upset regarding the timing of these because they're conducting businesses at those specific hours, and they're unable to get away. I don't know what resolution could be made to accommodate those individuals that are unable. You say they can call by phone and discuss it with you personally, or with whoever?
Yes, we had the one session from 4:30 till 6:30, and the other session from 8:30 till 10:30. So those times were set in consultation with the BIA in the chamber as to what would be convenient for their members. Again, if someone wishes to contact us, wishes to set up an appointment with me personally, I'd be happy to meet with them at their convenience.
Counselor Verbeke.
Mayor, a happier note. Counselor Jacobs, my wife and myself last Saturday represented the town on your behalf at the, I'm gonna screw up the name, and I was gonna say the Mexican Independence Day. It was held by, you know, it was, it was held at the consulate, and amazing how, how well it was run. I didn't realize they had to get all these kind of permits, too, for that, but that all went quickly, and permits went quickly, yeah, and they got it done, so I just wanted to thank you on behalf of my wife, and I'm sure Counselor Jacobs letting us attend that, and it was great, and, you know, the police were there, present, directing traffic, it was, you know, it would have been nice maybe somewhere else, and I didn't, I was supposed to go the next day, but there's a lot of stuff happening now that, at the Roma Club, and I'm not sure if anybody went, but the Mexican Independence Day was very well.
Thank you very much. Counselor Dunn.
Your worship, actually, Counselor Verbeke, Counselor Hammond and myself were at the Roma Club for the migrant worker Independence Day, the Festival Patrias, and it was actually well-attended, because I believe it's, Mucci Farms puts on their family, or, I don't know what is it, Employee Luncheon. So they, they put that on there at first, and then they went into that, so that's how that went. I've got a question for Rob. I'm sorry I didn't ask Shannon earlier, but I've had some requests about the smell from the PCC and what's going on over this past summer. It's been a little extra, and where that might be coming. I know we've taken provisions inside the drying house to try and alleviate some of that. If you might have any thoughts on that, Rob?
Your worship, counsel, recent complaints, like over the last couple of weeks, likely due to tomato processing season. That adds a tremendous amount of load, odors, organics, biosolids to the system. I'm not gonna say a lot more. I think it's about double, but I'd have to check, so that's certainly a cause, that concentration. We are in the middle of our biosolids upgrade at the plant. That contract is still ongoing, though we took a number of steps to, you know, control the odors through that process, and when this project is complete, the upgrades to help improve odors at that particular location will also be complete, so we do expect it to, to be better over time. But if it's recent complaints, it's likely due to tomato processing.
Counselor Hammond?
Your worship, thank you. Again, I guess I was remiss earlier in not mentioning that Counselor Dunn and myself, we also went to the SEC annual banquet, had a great meal, it was a great night. They're a great group of people trying to do some fantastic things. They handed out three, three fabulous awards to deserving people, and Counselor Dunn took home a $2,600 bracelet.
Ooh.
Ooh.
I won.
Counsel Verbeke.
We're the mayor, thanks. I saw the markings on the road about five days ago, and now people are coming up wanting to know who in their right mind would put a bike lane north of Clark Street the way it is, with two or three parking spots there. Could we not put it to the curb? I mean, I can just, it's probably provincial law, just like we have on Erie Street, north here or south, whatever you wanna call it, by double seven, but I don't know. I guess we're not just used to seeing bike lanes in that shape, and even today, if there was somebody using a bike lane, they couldn't use a bike lane because there was trucks delivering vehicles parked on the road, too. So I mean, it's just, I don't have a ring on, I'm not an engineer, but it just doesn't make common sense to me.
Do you want to touch on that, Mr. Sharon?
Simply, your worship, that we follow all of the recommended guidelines that are put out in the various transportation handbooks, so we're certainly not making this up on the fly. Integrating cyclists and automobiles is a complicated matter, as I'm sure everyone is aware, and a lot of people have different opinions as to, you know, where they should be and how they should function. We rely on those guidelines because they have been vetted through the industry professionals, and if that's how they recommend to do it, you know, we typically follow that as opposed to going out on our own.
Oddly enough, Counselor, I discovered that one today, too, and I thought, oh. But when I, when I stopped to realize, when you go to other municipalities, cities, whatever, they, too, are building their bicycle lanes in that fashion, and it's just something that we're all going to have to get used to as we move forward into the changes in, I guess, transportation modes that we're, yeah, so. I just want to touch really quickly on a couple of things that happened recently. We did have a gentleman here in the audience earlier, and he was representing the, for lack of better words, the, I forget what their, North Shore, what's the, Lake Erie Association, anyway, in regard to shoreline protection. So we did have a really good meeting with a number of individuals that day, and a lot of very clear information was shared back and forth, and I wish them well, if they get that visit with the premier, that they can push forward some results for themselves. We also had a meeting with the IESO recently with some of the upper brass, I guess, for lack of better words, and the only reason I mention it is because they were here to get a sense from the municipality on what we saw the future holds for Leamington's need for hydro supply. And it was just, the body language was really, really interesting, and they were leaving from here to go to a couple of our large greenhouse operations. Afril was one of them, and we were kind of excited that that was going to happen because we know they're from the city and probably have never seen the inside of a greenhouse operation, so it was going to be very eye-opening for them. And today, during one of the two meetings I was attending up in Windsor at Essex Power, they also touched on these gentlemen being here because they were escorting them around, and the feedback they received from the upper echelon of the IESO, not that I'm gonna quote them verbatim, but it was extremely positive and supportive of what's happening here in our town with the development of our new hydro line that's in here, and they said they haven't heard wording like that before, and in the whole discussion that they were having up in Toronto, wherever it happened to be, Leamington's mentioned several times as examples, as to what they have to start planning for, so. Yeah, and that was referred to. There is something happening west of London in Ontario, so. And finally, on Sunday morning, I was lucky enough to get the invitation to go down to Point Peely National Park and take part in the Taking Steps Against Breast Cancer Walk and Run that they had down here. Beautiful day, bunch of lovely women that were down there, and it was really quite moving to experience it, and happy it occurred. They're a little disappointed in the numbers that are turning out, but there's another great big walk for the same thing up in Windsor this weekend, I guess, and they thought maybe they were just lining up. Of course, they missed the opportunity, they're gonna be walking on streets in Windsor, they could've been in the beautiful downtown or Point Peely National Park, but again, big thanks, happy to be able to represent the community. Statement, members non-debatable? Motion to adjourn? Counsel Jacobs, Counsel Dunn, all in favor? Carry.